Thank you, Bill. Thank you. Okay. Thanks for joining us in our first work session regarding the Correctional Center. Got a lot of issues to talk about. I foresee this just the first of several meetings of finding facts. I think, especially after reading your article on Fort Scott Biz, throwing money is just not the answer. I think we need to do a detailed information from you guys you can share with us and help us make decisions going forward. But apparently, this is... The person shortage is widespread throughout the United States. You can see that on any television watch. So it's not just Fort Scott. I understand what you're experiencing because everyone else has experienced the same problem. My goal as a chairman or a county commissioner as a group is working together and find out how we got here. And hopefully, we can avoid that again by working together. So I guess we'll just turn the floor for general discussion. Let you gentlemen tell us your ideals, how we got here maybe, or what we can do to fix it. I'm listening.
I'll go first.
Okay.
I've got to leave at 8:30. I've got labs to do and I've got other things. But this is a priority, so I wanted to be here. So I'll be the elephant in the room real quick.
Okay.
So over since Friday and Saturday, I know that we had talked about other areas, or not other areas, other jurisdictions and what they pay and what they're going through and everything. So I came up with, oh, if you will, I prepared those budgets for those wages, so to speak. Fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. Now, they're just numbers. I took it upon myself to do it. So this one...
Fifteen, sixteen, seventeen means dollars?
Yes, starting, because that's where, you know, we kind of went with it. So Lynn, if you'll pass that around. And Bill's got one. So like I said, these are just numbers. I will tell you that they are not right because I'm not a mathemagician and I could not figure out that insurance thing. So what I did is I just took an average of the three years of the information that was provided by Susan and threw it in there. Now, each one is a, like, at the front page, it's fifteen-dollar solution. Fifteen-dollar an hour solution B is the same above, minus two correctional officer salary, overtime, and holidays. I don't want to riff those because in the future, they are very beneficial when you are fully staffed to cut down on overtime and so forth. But I was challenged, so to speak, not by the commission, but to come up with solutions. So that's what I did. Now, and then the C is the same as above, but then adding two part-time people, which I have now. But they're, I mean, they're limited hours. It's when they can and if they can't, then I got to go to a full-time or whatever. So, and I want you guys to take notice of the top figure on that page. And on each page, it never changes. I did that for myself because I would rather my people have it and try to come up with a solution than for me to change my salary.
He made a comment in regards to the top, the top figures, what he's meaning by the people that are watching and that are sitting here who can't see it. He's talking about his salary.
Yeah.
So, and it goes back to a couple of years ago when my salary was raised and it was a question in regards to giving it back to the employees. But I didn't request that. The three commissioners at that time are the ones that requested it. And I made it a public note, made it a public comment. That's not for me, it's for my people. So the people that are still watching, he still follows the same theory as I do. He's, he's looking out after his employees. I look after all my employees under my control. He's not wanting a pay raise and that's what that bottom number is. That always will remain the same.
Okay. Well, Bobby, let me ask, excuse me. Pay is very, very important. But like I said in your article in Fort Scott Biz, you even mentioned some of the departments across the state pay higher are still having the problems. So being a manager since 1976 and some past somewhere, money is always a factor, but it's not always, it's not the only factor. I mean, what do you give credit to? I mean, you get turnover out there. We had turnover at Public Works. I mean, it's more than just a dollar amount probably. What do you, how do we get here? How do we fix it or is it fixed? Or I'm asking, I really don't know, guys, so...
Well, I think in just my, my opinion, it's a totality of a lot of circumstances. We don't have the... I'm trying to find the right word. There's just not a lot of people that work.
Yeah.
And since the pandemics hit, I mean, that's... I mean, if anybody's pointing a finger at anything, it's probably the pandemic. I mean, since then, that's where everything's changed. I mean, it seemed like overnight wages in, in the commercial industry and stuff is just through the roof, through the roof. And then, you know, you got people that don't work. But in my line of work or our line of work, we're not getting the thirty-five-year-olds, the forty-year-olds, you know, that may want to do a career change or have good work ethic or whatever. We're not getting those people, at least in my line of work. I think, and I haven't done it and I'm just throwing this figure out loosely, but most of my employees are in their low twenties. And, you know, that's not helping. But I know you got to start somewhere. It's not a desirable job because of the things that we deal with and see. I mean, I still see things on a daily basis that I've never seen. And, you know, I looked at schedules because I had a couple people that came and did extra interviews for the ones that were leaving them. They don't like twelve-hour shifts. And I said, well, will you like eight hours where you got every Monday and Tuesday off? Well, no, I got to have weekends. So it's just a, a different...
Mindset.
Mindset. It, it used to be, and I'm sure everybody here can agree, hey, what can I do to you, for you, you know, you're my boss, you know? And now it's like, what are you going to do for me?
I understand. One other, I got a frog's paw. Didn't drink enough coffee. One thing I'd like to clear up. Does the air conditioner work in that building?
So the issue with the air condition, and we can go back, but I'm not going to.
I know we had some, I know we had some problems, yeah, but...
Yeah, it's about three, about three weeks ago, maybe four. And I'd been on Tony all the time. You know, every time I'd see him, hey, where are we at? Where are we at? Where are we at? And he, we're waiting on parts, we're waiting on parts. Finally, we got all the parts and some of them had to be programmed. Well, then I'm going to start next week. Well, next week and that week and the week after that were rain, rain, rain during the week. He was out all week last week. And it's cooler in the north part of the building, which is the inmate population pods. That's where I told him to start out. And our south end of the building is still a little warm, but they need it before we need it. So I don't know if he's coming back this week to finish. He said he got some of the parts in, the, the air conditioners and was able to jump room, his terms, so it's cooler back there.
Does an insurance claim need to be submitted?
For...
For, for, you know, the, we thought that possibly it was due to the power outage that we had.
I haven't been able to talk or to clarify that with him to see what he's found up there on the roof since he's been up there.
Because when we talked to the architect, he said that after they had talked to training directly that they thought any kind of a big power surge like that could, could hurt the boards.
When we get, when I leave this morning, I will reach out to him and see if he's got any, if he was able to get where he needed to see if that was an insurance claim and then I can shoot you a call and thanks.
I'm glad you worked with Tony because, you know, I don't read a lot of Facebook. But what I did read, or my wonderful wife pointed out to me, is that, you know, a lot of people are leaving because of air conditioning, things like that, so...
It's, it was brought up a time or two and what they didn't understand is everything that everybody in this room knew, that, you know, the parts and the equipment and that it was everything. And it wasn't just one little capacitor or whatever, so...
So just in a nutshell, supply and demand wasn't here. He had a month with record in May with the record recording rainfall, which was last month, couldn't get in there. So now he's in here, he's trying to get it taken care of.
Good, good. Okay. Lynn, you're all quiet over.
About a year, about a year since it's been down. We got about a month since that unit's been down. So, you know, hopefully, there's some way we can expedite now. I know I was at the lake this weekend and nobody wants to be in that kind of heat.
No, no, pretty hot.
And, and also for the record, we have also supplied fans, air conditioning units. We have some type of...
We put fans in the, in the inmate population when it got hot. I mean, big fans. We're keeping the doors open during lockdown times for added circulation. We're giving them buckets of ice. So we were doing everything that we possibly could to try to buy it a little bit more time till something got fixed or halfway fixed.
So there was nothing deterring as far as this commission or anyone, yourself, you were trying very hard to get that AC fixed. That's what it sounded like, but okay, great.
Like Bill said, supply...
At the mercy of the contractor.
Mercy of the contractor, yeah. Okay. I guess Clifton's not going to call in, I guess. Says I'm going to turn over you for a little bit.
What time did you need the week?
Eight thirty.
So I was asked to put together some information and it's hard to just talk about one department without talking about all of them and our, our situation as a county. And like I said last week, we are a poor county with high taxes. And I'll be able to prove that through some of the data that we have collected. We tend to compare ourselves to several different counties with similar populations, but that doesn't always equate to similar assessed valuations. And so therefore, the assessed valuation is what drives how much we can get per, per levy in property tax. And so we are one of the, the lowest in assessed valuations when we look at this. And based on the counties with similar population, we fall in the middle for population, but we have the lowest assessed valuation and we're third from the highest in total mill levies, which is second to the lowest in property tax generated. So we don't generate a whole lot of property tax based off of our high mill levy. And that's all shown on this first page. And we will get this information out on our website so that people can look at it and make some determinations from it. The next sheet is very similar information. We pulled their audited financials from the state's website and called for the 2021. We were able to obtain just one other one. So I don't have 2021, all their information yet. But if you get, go to and look at it, there is charts on the next few pages.
Hey, Clifton.
Hey, Clifton. So the one, the sheet that has several charts on it, if everyone can look at that one, you'll see that Bourbon County, on that very first one, the value of one mill by county were the lowest compared to our peers. However, we're not the, we have counties that have higher assessed valuations and they're actually taxing higher. So, you know, we've tried to control the levy at our county. But then if you looked at the assessed valuation, we're the lowest. Property tax generated by county, us and Neosho are the two lowest. And then if you look at the actual audited financials, you can see we're, we're just trailing behind other communities in what we pay. So I think the, the largest spread was about $300,000. So, but to be able to spend at the same level as our peers that we're comparing ourselves to, we would have to raise the mill levy one and a half to four mills to be able to spend at that level. So that just gives you comparables of what they're spending total budget dollars. I, I didn't have enough data to be able to break it out by employee benefits and payrolls, but I did note on there if their, their employee benefits were not included. And so we had two that we were comparing ourselves to. And Marion was not a really good comparison. They tend to be behind on just about everything. Neosho, I would like to get more information from them. So that gives you some ideas. And if you go to this next one, it says assessed value per capita and tax per capita. We're second to lowest in assessed value per capita. And so, and then tax per capita, we're also the second to the lowest. So what that says to me is, is that even though we have a low assessed valuation, we're trying to still keep our taxes down. We're doing our very best. And this is all school districts, everything. This is what it costs per person. So I felt like that that was really good data. The next several sheets, and this is why I feel like it's so important for us to understand where are the dollars coming from? Where, where does our assessed valuation come from? And, you know, we're trying to compare ourselves to Allen County. I'm going to give them as the example. They have public utilities that have a lot higher value than what we do. And so it makes it very difficult to, if we don't have those same type of property value types and classes, then we don't generate as much assessed valuation.
Where does that come from? I mean, public utilities, do they own their own gas?
That'd be like a pipeline coming through there.
And now they're going to put in a power line through there. We're going to get seven miles. They're going to probably get a whole county. So their assessed value, so their public, public utilities.
And Allen County, they used to own their own electricity.
Yes.
Allen County used to own the electricity company, but...
So does the wind farms fall into this category too? Has that been figured out?
Well, in ten years.
In ten years.
Well, it'll be eight years now coming from...
Yeah.
So it's not figured in today, then?
No, no.
So if it was figured in today, then that would help us out?
Yes, it could.
But keep in mind...
With the connection plan up there too, once that goes into effect, it's a part of the thing.
And I'm sure you were, we get so many dollars each year from them now under... But we, $200,000 of that went to salaries this 2022. So we, we did target some of that money for payroll and a lot of it for economic development. But $200,000 was, we took from that money for payroll. So it is helping.
Yeah. On the backside of these, and these are all pulled off the state's website. So this is information that the public can get to as well. It breaks it down by state, city, county, township, school district so that you have an understanding of how much of the tax dollars and where they go. I just thought they were really good charts to kind of give you an idea of how much of the pie. And the county takes up a lot of, in Bourbon County, we take up a good chunk of the pie. We're the, in the red. So, you know, I feel like we're, we're one of the higher taxing bodies here in the county. The school district is actually the green and the blue together. I think that's right. Oh, these two right here. So they're the other largest between the two school districts. So, yes.
Did you say those were on the county website?
They will be.
They will be.
Here, there's an extra packet if you'd like, like that, Ann. And there's two extra ones right there. So that's just more information to kind of help explain how we got here. The next few pages, I'm not going to go into detail on, but it talks about valuation growth of all counties, appraised value, assessed value, and what it's been doing. And of course, assessed value and tax dollars have just been, continued to go up over the years. And so it's just very good information if you want to, you want to compare us, compare us to other counties. It shows our assessed valuation. But the, the point I want to drive home is that we have less dollars to work with than other counties of our like size. And as I said last week, it's a much bigger conversation. We have to talk about economic development. How do we get our assessed valuation up? That's through better housing, industry, having economic development opportunities coming in. And so, because we can't, we can't change that part of the puzzle. We don't get new dollars. And so when you don't have new dollars, the shift has to come either from other departments or we have to figure out ways to cut expenses. And so it's, it's a, it's a, it's a much bigger conversation is what I'm trying to say.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, I have a question real quick.
Okay.
In the last year with economic development, what has happened? What has been created for economic development? Has there been anything come in? So within the last year and a half, what's been reached out? Do you look for coming in or are there any changes?
I would have to have our economic development director give that report. That's not fair for me to give because I don't know the businesses. If there've been small businesses that have come in, I wouldn't have that data.
Bill, I would say that he's working on some very nice projects. If, if they've come through for us, we're going to be in a different Bourbon County.
Yes.
He's working hard to get those.
I would agree with that.
Trying to get on the map and, and working for success.
They haven't turned any dirt yet, but very promising.
So I think this is probably would be a reasonable question to ask. What's the timeframe that we're looking at?
A year.
Possibly a year.
A year from now or a year from the time that it got started?
Year from now. Year from now.
You don't turn a ship on a dime.
This is a multimillion dollar project. They're involved in other projects. They're going to finish some other projects before they decide on us and move forward. It really looks promising, but economic development is a plus, so...
And we're in a, we're on a very strict non-disclosure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I understand. It's like I said, just a general question, where are we at for economic development? And if Justin has something, I mean, he keeps looking back here.
No, no.
We have a very strict non-con...
Yeah. I've already said too much, Rob. Anyway, Rob is working on things, so...
So when we look at this, I wanted to show at least what our active employees were. That's the next sheet that's in here. It tells you how many is there by department. And this was all pulled from data out of our system. We have about 113 full-time employees and about 19 part-time employees. As of 6/13, that's when this data was taken from. The next, go ahead.
So June 13th, the correction had 710 employees and you're down to eight tomorrow. I know, I know last Friday on the payroll, we approved 18 employees for Correctional Center. And that's a question, guys, I'm just trying to...
Under my budget, I have 19. So the 17 and two is correct for grand total of 19.
Last Friday, we paid 18 on the payroll. I seen it. We, commissioners signed payroll, so...
You know the payrolls.
And I, again, I'm just asking a question before I can learn.
No, we've been, with these three, that'll make eight. So we've been five down. So I don't know how we paid 18 or however.
Right there on her report. June 17th, 18 employees.
By payroll, these are broken out by payroll for 2022. This, this next report I just handed out. And it shows how many employees are paid each pay period. And it's averaged 18 to 19 people per pay period.
No, we go back. So I know that there were a couple of those that that was like their last pay, like they only had one day or something on there. So some of those people were already gone when we got that pay period, but since it's paying, they're behind. Because I know Courtney they have to figure several lost checks.
But Bobby released in Fort Scott Biz, that would be 10 people.
Those numbers ain't right. I don't...
These are not right?
I, no, no. Somebody's numbers isn't right. I, I've been, I've been down four to five people for...
I don't doubt you at all, Bobby.
Ever. And then with the other three, that makes eight. So I don't know where the numbers are coming in at or whatever. I mean, my overtime would show that I've been down forever. But needless to say, I think that's probably something we can look at.
Yeah, I can pull the payroll registers for you so you can look at them.
Then I can go through there and see.
But it's January, it said you started with 21 employees. What, this, Susan, just going by payroll?
Yeah, and so to his point, maybe if somebody, if there was turnover at that point, maybe that, maybe the new person had started and the other one was getting paid out that pay period. That's potentially, that could happen.
Just on a side note regards to the numbers on the correction side, that's, he'll, he'll address that. In regard to the Sheriff's Department, you have a total of 19. I will agree with that. With that, as a note, two of those positions, actually, three of those positions are on a grant.
I don't have 19 on yours, I have 17.
Seventeen plus two, so you have 17.
Those are part-time.
Part-time?
Those two are part-time.
You come up 19, all right. I was looking at it as administration of biz myself. So just as the record, that three of those are on grant. One is a school resource officer, two are the...
I have your 17. Yeah, I just...
For some reason, I got to go back. Something's clicking that doesn't make any sense right here. So I got to go back to verify that.
Well, you can understand, Bobby, as a commissioner and not knowing very little about your operationary payroll, these numbers certainly don't agree with Fort Scott Biz.
Correct.
For some reason.
No, I'll, I'll admit that too because they don't jive with me either. But like Ashley said, that maybe there was somebody leaving and then we hired somebody and they had that cross and then that person stayed over.
Two of those, I think, are part-time.
Well, they're in the regular pay. When I pull the payroll registers, I just, I, I just counted off the payroll registers, how many people were paid.
Right, I mean, they're, they're in there. But I just, when I looked at the names while I was counting them, I know that two of those are part-time. They usually have minimal hours. I just, I just noticed that off the top of my head.
And I'm trying to use...
So that would be, he would be down two people then, based off these numbers? Or one person? Because it was showing 17 full and two part-time, total of 19. But we can go back through that, we can get together and go back through that? Yep. We'll move on. Turnover, I had, there's a turnover report from 2009 to 2022. For Bobby, he's had up through 6/13. Of course, these numbers were taken. He had four people total that had, he'd had turnover with. Now that number will change when? When are these other?
2022, he's had four.
And how many more? How many more will be leaving?
Three, three, three's leaving this week.
Okay.
Am I looking at the right page?
It's this one. And turnover has been very high since 2010. Probably averaging around 10 people per year, 10 to 11. The, the areas in green are the areas where we tend to have the most turnover. So that kind of gives you an idea. There, there's concerns in those areas, in my opinion, when you see that much turnover. And.
I'm sorry to interrupt. So if I'm reading this correctly, on corrections from years of 2009 to 2022, I've had a turnover of 136 employees?
Yes. Yeah.
Now, I, I will clarify that. All of those 136 employees are not because of pay. Some have moved, some have went on. Very few just didn't work out the job for them. I mean, it's a whole totality. So I want to make that very clear. I am not saying that 136 people left for salaries.
Yes, I would agree with that statement.
Replacing these folks, a new employee, they get a, is there any training?
So a lot of ours is on-the-job training. They show up and in a perfect world, we go through a lot of hands-on, or hands-on defensive tactics and stuff. But most of it's just on-the-job training, learning the board, where to push the buttons, how, how to interact. Now, there is a jail academy. There's four of them a year. I've sent some people to. Matter of fact, two of the people that are leaving this week, they just got back three weeks ago. So to answer your question, it's just a lot of on-the-job, hands-on type stuff.
Sorry to interrupt you, Susan.
That's okay. What are the requirements to be corrections officer?
18, high school diploma or GED equivalent, no felonies. And I mean, pass a background check. And usually we just run a triple I and see what there's, if there's anything on there. Or the triple I is just our background.
Does it criminal history check what they've been in contact with law enforcement?
So I mean, the, I'll be willing to work.
Mm-hmm. Okay. The next several sheets is where I really dug into the data. So from 2017 to 2021, I pulled all the payroll expenses and compared us where we have been over the last five years as far as expenses are concerned. And so I'm just going to walk down through these. And when, when we say that we've not increased wages, maybe not everybody has had an increase in wages, but there has definitely been increased wages. And so we'll kind of go through that. And some of that is there was some restructuring done. I, I know that, that some of the elected officials had some bumps. And so that's part of the scenario. But I really tried to break it down by hourly folks versus overtime pay versus the elected officials and management. And so I'm just going to kind of walk down through these so that the public has a better understanding of, and again, this information will all be on the website. For hourly pay, this is the sheriff's department. Since 2017, regular pay has increased 24%. Overtime has increased 38%. And the administration has increased 25%. When you go down and total up all your benefits, on average, there has been a 7% increase each year in wages. Benefits, there's been a 6% increase each year, and I'm going to say this for every department. Benefits, you, even though we might have gotten a 3% every year, it depends on the employee and what plans they're choosing. So this can fluctuate more or less. So it's, but it's just showing you what's happened in this department. So total would be 7% increase for the sheriff's department. For corrections.
I couldn't say that last comment again.
7% on average each year was the increase for the past five years in benefits and wages.
And that includes the overtime and regular?
Yes. Yes, it does. For the corrections office, hourly, the, the increase has been 11% from 2017 to 2021. Overtime has increased 49% from 2017 to 2021. And management has increased 15%. Now, on average, when you're looking at it as a whole, that's a 3% increase each year. 2% on benefits. So a total of benefits and wages of 3%. And you can see in 2019, on the chart, the hourly folks were being paid higher than what they were in 2020. And so that was from 2017 to 2020, or 2019, sorry, to 2020. So there was definitely a dip. And I would assume that was when maybe you were having some trouble filling some spots in 2019 to 2020. Maybe you had some turnover. But the, the data shows there. So, and you'll find that the corrections is probably one of the main areas where we've not had increases like we have in other departments. The data shows that. So county attorney, hourly, their hourly pay has decreased 44%. However, that's shifted to management where there's been a 60% increase. So we've got less hourly employees and we've put the money towards management. On average, they have a 6% increase each year. Benefits was only 3%. So that dropped their benefits and wages down to 5%.
I've got a question real quick. Looking at your chart, 2018, regardless of the turnover for full-time, it shows here, if I'm looking at this correctly, in 18, I had five people that had left. According to your chart, in an 18 with an increase in overtime pay, 65,000, whatever. And then it drops the next year later. I think it was 18 or 19 is when the deputies got a dollar, when we filled out the same. And that's when I lost those personnel. So you had to figure in that overtime to fill those shifts. So just an explanation is where everything goes, is what's, what's taking place.
Register of deeds. They've had a 48% decrease in hourly. She, I think she lost a person. Her management has gone up 26%, so some of that shift was there. But on average, she's taken a 1% decrease over the last five years. Yeah. Yep. When you look at the clerk, regular pay and partly what the issues are here with why there was some, some, there was, I think there was two people working at the same time in the clerk's office, maybe when you were training. And so there was a 20% increase since 2017. But you can see from 20 to 21, that starts to go back down. So 20 was the year where we were doing duplicate services. Management increased 20%. And that's part of, the reason is due to the shift for the clerk. On average, that's a 3% increase each year. Treasurers Department, there's been a 15% decrease in hourly wages. I know she's had a hard time filling a lot of her positions.
Again, she eliminated positions.
Okay. Since 2019, we're starting to see that go back up, but 2019, it dropped significantly. On average, she's had a 2% decrease in wages and a 3% overall.
Wait, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yes. Yes.
So in the treasurer's office, where does she stand with employees now?
She's fully, she's full.
And that means she used to have one more than she has now?
Yeah, she's decreased one.
And that means how many?
Uh. Yes, four full-time.
Okay.
The courthouse, that would be custodial and part-time during COVID. We had to hire somebody to be at the front door. So that's partly what the increase is there is a 20% increase in hourly wages. You'll see that go down in '22. On average, in hourly wages, that's a 6% increase. But the benefits was only 2%. So on average, that's a 5% increase in the general custodial and part-time. District court. And you guys will probably have to help explain this, but since 2017, regular pay has increased 58%. I think one FTE was added for security. So on average, that's a 15% increase. But I think that is completely because of that one FTE that had to be added upstairs. Is that correct, Lynn?
What did you say? Run that part again. Make sure I.
So the security, because we had to increase security, security. So we have two people.
We still have an FTE because you have another bailiff.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. You have one full FTE for.
One full FTE continuing.
For the bailiff.
Correct. It's going to go up more.
Yes.
In the next year or so.
Because we're getting that extra.
Add one to two judges in our history.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Okay. Emergency management, since 2017, has increased 16%. On average, that's 5% increase each year.
I have a question on emergency management, Lynn.
Yes.
The question I have, isn't emergency management, does he, his stuff is paid for by grants? Not all of it, but quite a bit.
It can be. I don't know that we've always traditionally done it that way.
Right, right.
So right now, the general fund is paying for it.
Okay.
So if, if we do get reimbursed, it's probably about $15,000 from his grant that can be put towards that.
I know in the past, I'd read the newspaper where he got grants for this and that.
Yeah.
And he's well worth it, I think.
Yeah, yeah. Yes.
He gets one, one grant every year and it's pretty well guaranteed.
Yeah.
And that's the $15,000 total grant. And the other grants will be on that, like the road bridge, the disaster, we'll put that into public works.
Thank you, Penny Ann.
Yeah. So for public works, and I'm going to spend a little bit of time on this one. Since 2017, regular pay has decreased 3%. Management's increased 36% and that was because we added another administrative position in 2019. But what we have seen here is, on average, his increase has only been 2% each year. And part of that is because of how he has restructured. He had lost some people. And then instead of replacing those positions, he took the opportunity to increase wages in his department. And so that's, he's actually down FTEs in this department. But his people are, are getting a little bit better paid to be more competitive with the, the commercial industry.
You reported that?
Well, several years ago.
We, we did. And we'd make this county-wide, that if you had money in your budget?
We did. Well, we went back and we changed the positions, made us one, two, three, four, and five, which gave everyone an opportunity to move upward if they would learn how to run certain equipment and do certain things. I would bump them up a grade and it continued to the, and Eric's carried a little bit farther. He didn't, he chose not to replace a few people.
I know.
And bumped up more yet.
Decreasing, you know, employees.
So something like that. I mean, I know that's what you did and what Eric did. But when, like if your employee gained another certification for road grader maintenance or whatever, and then maybe got another one for something else, you considered that as a maybe a bump?
Yes, I did because it, that employee became more valuable on their daily workforce doing things. But again, when we structured that, we started, commissioners approved that structure and gave the director the ability to move people upward as they learned and got better and more helpful doing projects.
So it's kind of like my corporal, my sergeant, my lieutenant?
Yeah.
Yeah, very similar.
You brought that up.
Yeah.
We just, yeah, we just called them maintenance ones, maintenance one, two, five.
Authorization to bump the wages. They had money in their budget. And Eric and Jim both took advantage of it.
Yeah, because you recall this year, the commissioners chose to do away with their salary resolution. Give you the opportunity, you the opportunity to reward your employees without following a sheet of paper. You know your employees, you know how much money is your budget. So you had an opportunity to raise those employees to what you thought, you know, a new employee is not worth employees. Been there five years, just doing a good job.
Sure.
That was the purpose and intent of doing away with the salary resolution. Anyway.
For the appraiser and IT, I think this is my last one to kind of go through. There's been, the reason why I had to put these two together is because some of the IT stuff used to be paid out of the appraiser's office. And so I just lumped them together so I didn't have to break it all down. But there's been a 38% decrease in hourly wages, but a 33% increase in management. And so basically, they just offset each other. On average, these two departments have had a 2% increase each year.
And again, the appraiser's office lost a lot of staff when they, when they went to the new digital access and programs that let them do their work.
I think three, if I remember correctly.
Let them do their work off of terminals and their bars.
Yeah.
So what in your opinion, Susan, is a good number to have overall at the bottom?
Well, I, I think, I think what this shows is that even though the commission maybe hasn't given 3% raises every year to their employees, there have, they have, they've done what they could with the dollars that year to either increase wages in certain areas, maybe it's put on the salary schedule. I, I can't explain that because I wasn't here during that time. But I can, what I can say is the data tells me that there has been increases, whether it's overtime or whatever, to people's wages in every department, except for the treasurer's department where she actually went down. But every other department has had some kind of a, of an increase in their wages. And so when we talk about, if we want to give raises in the corrections, where are we going to go to get the dollars to help support that? And so it either has to be increased in taxes. We either have to increase the mill levy. Our assessed valuation this year is only up a little bit. So we're not going to generate a whole lot of extra dollars. Sometimes you could take advantage of that when your assessed valuation goes up. But the taxpayer is going to tell you, well, if your assessed valuation's going up, I'd really like to see you drop the mill levy because they're getting taxed more when you do that. So these gentlemen have a very hard decision and we have to try and figure out, is there other ways to, to make this work?
One of the things that we, we talk about all the time is you have carryover, which most departments do. You look at the possibility of giving your people some raises off of that carryover. So just, you know, in the old, in the old philosophy, back when, a few years ago, we were in the school districts. I don't know if that practice still goes on. If you had extra, extra money, spend it as fast as you can. Well, that's not, that's not reality anymore.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Are you still there, Clifton? You know?
I'm here, Clifton.
So you guys are faced with. So, you guys are faced with a little bit different situation than other departments because you have to cover shifts no matter what, right? So, that's probably why you have overtime a lot of times, I would assume. So, my question would be, you have to dig even deeper into your, your data. And we have to look at, and it's gonna, it's gonna be both departments. It can't just be your department, it has to be both departments. That's being looked at from a management perspective of, what does our data tell us? Are we, are we really active late hours of the night? Or is that an area where maybe we don't run as many people at night? What is, what is our arrest records? What is our, what is, what does the data tell us? And so, and a lot of that, I don't have at my fingertips. I can analyze data all day long and tell you what's going on, where the money's being spent. But I can't tell you from a management perspective because I'm not in that department. So, that's what, that's probably the next step, I think. If we, if, as a group, we think it's a good idea to not, I, in my opinion, I don't think we should be taxing more. I think we need to try and find, find ways to make it work in other, other ways. Reducing expenses, looking at contracts, is there something that we can do to, you know, really? We're at a crisis situation. So, we have to look at everything.
And I get a lot of calls after, after our budget season, is wanting to know why my taxes went up when the, when the assessed valuation wasn't used and we didn't raise the minimum. And I'll tell them, I says, well, prepare your assessed valuation last year with this year. And if your assessed valuation went up, you're gonna be paying more taxes.
Yeah.
Somebody else may be paying a little less because there's one down.
I have one more question. Bobby, excuse me, I have one more question before we move on. Apparently, looking at the turnover sheet, big numbers are you and I. And of course, Eric's sitting right in there now. But like for us, public works, two thousand and fourteen, it was ten. That was my first year back. We had a lot of people retired that didn't want to work with Jim Harris. So, and that's okay, but they was due to retire. So, what do you contribute your high numbers to? I mean, they didn't want me. I mean, what do you contribute your numbers to?
Moving on. I mean, and you said in twenty nineteen, or whatever, would you take over?
Thirteenth, August thirteenth, my numbers really went up in fourteen because people was leaving.
Right.
And I helped some of them leave.
Sure. Well, in twenty thirteen, we was paying ten dollars and sixty-four cents an hour on the correction side. So, without going back and looking, very few people were terminated. I do not like to terminate people. I have, it's not something that I like to do.
Right.
Most, most people left on, on their own because they wanted to move on. You know, like I said, it's not, it's not a profession that people go to college, you know, and get a degree to become a correctional officer. It's, oh, we're hiring, oh, I applied and I got it and I don't like it and I went elsewhere, my family moved. I mean, there's a lot of contributing factors. And I'm, I'm sure out of that hundred and thirty-six, there were some that didn't like me. But I could bet you that you could go back and go through that list and call them if you want and just see what they say.
Yeah, well, again, that's normal, they didn't like me either, so.
I have a question.
Sure.
So, from a HR job description, really looking at and analyzing positions, what do you think is a minimum and maximum amount a corrections officer should be paid? Based on the skill set that they are required to have, what they're having to do every, from a day-to-day basis, what do you think that that min and max should be? And I wouldn't compare us to other people, I'm asking just your opinion.
Well, just from being in the profession and just being here in Bourbon County, I, I would think the, the minimum fourteen-dollar range, fifteen right in there, and the highest, non, non-management, you know, right around the nineteen, twenty. And the reason why I say that is because when we're hiring these eighteen, nineteen, twenty-year-old kids, we, the industry in general, is throwing them to the wolves. These are eighteen, nineteen-year-old kids, fresh out of high school, didn't go to college, maybe in college. People communicate with these now instead of like what we're doing. They don't like confrontation, they don't like people in their face, they don't like being cussed at. That's what that job entails every day. So, we're, we gotta find the right people to do the right job that are a little thick-skinned, that can talk to people, whether it's in a hostile setting or in a, in a cool setting. You know, and then twenty years ago, ninety-five, when I was a police officer, ninety-seven, things were a lot different. We didn't have the sex crimes, we didn't have, meth was, meth was here, but it wasn't like it is today. Back in my day, we had the labs and stuff like that. You know, and then also, you know, the media doesn't do police work and corrections, any type of justice. So, people are shying away from what, you know, used to be traditionally is, hey, come be a cop, you know, it's fun, get a retirement, blah, blah, blah. In other words, I went to a training here, well, as my jail supervisor academy that I went to here a couple of months ago. And there was a statistic, and I don't have it, but they gave a date and said prior to that date, people that were in this line of work recommended was try to promoting and everything else. And from this date forward, they're like, no, don't, don't.
So, how do you advertise for your positions today?
How? I, Facebook and our website.
Do you put it in the paper at all?
No, because after our meeting, and I was gonna reach out to them, but from prior years, before we moved to the jail, it was very, very, very expensive, in my opinion, to get little to zero feedback from it. The Tribune took it upon themselves, and I'm glad they did. They sent me a email last Tuesday afternoon and it had a little bitty square and it says, come be, apply, we're looking to hire. I mean, it was a three or four sentence deal and it was a hundred and forty-three dollars a week. And not many people take the, you know, the Tribune.
How about four sky beds? Do you have anything on that one?
No, I mean, that's free with Loretta, isn't it?
Yeah, that's free.
But I mean, to the same thing as.
Do you put it on the county website as well? I know you guys have your own website, do you put it on the county one?
I thought there was a standing one on the county.
There's not. Even, even a link. On the sheriff's website, but not on ours.
There was one.
I thought there was one at one time, it was like a standard employment.
There's not, I checked that. And there's, when we click on, there's a sheriff's, like a resource tab. It does not go to your website. So, that either needs to be fixed or, but it's, it's not working.
And if you send the job description, you can must get it under the, on the main county's website here.
I would say the more places we can advertise, the better.
And, and I mean, with, with, and this is just the way I look at it, and I've gotta go, but and we're, we're in a budget and, you know, I don't, if, if we are having problems today attracting people in our community, Bourbon County, and maybe a little bit into each other county to come work here, I would hate to spend that money for like, and I'm sure in deed costs and all that, if we're not gonna gather people from, you know, to move here for that.
Yeah.
I have one more question. I'm sorry, go ahead, Bill.
You put it on your Facebook account, didn't you?
Do you look at me?
Yes, I'm looking at you.
And asking me what? What are you asking me? I'm sorry.
The position, did I see the position on your Facebook?
Oh, gosh. I don't know, not recently? I don't think recently. I don't, I don't, oh, on the, on our, can you see?
Since we, just in closing, since we have to go, and please don't take this the wrong way, by no means whatsoever. And it's not a dig, it's not a gotcha moment or anything like that, okay? Last week on this, when we had this discussion regards to reorganizing or shifting the inmates out due to staff shortages and stuff.
Right.
There was a news report that was done on it. It was done that evening and it was done that next morning on both of the local stations, KSN and KOAM. I did the press release. That was one of the best free advertisement that we can get for our money that allow people that the Bourbon County Sheriff's Office Corrections is looking for employees.
Yeah.
At twelve dollars and fifty cents. I mean, don't we all agree?
Yeah, we are.
That, that's, that's free advertisement and it covers the four states.
I agree.
To this day, how many applicants? Zero. So, I'm just saying, like I said, I'm not making it as a dig or anything like that. You're talking about social media. I mean, we have a ton of people that follow us on Face, Facebooks. And the ones that follow us, whenever we post something to their Facebook, they have tons of people that follow them. So, the word gets out. And so, I don't know what else to say.
Right.
But in closing, like I said, we have to go because we have things to other take care of. But we do appreciate it and we would like to set up another time to, to go over this. Since in regard to the, I look at the restructuring of things, that is something I've always wanted to do on the sheriff's side. But not knowing I had enough money to do it based on looking at that report of giving the incentives for people who specializes in certain things, they need to be rewarded because when it comes to a lawsuit, we are the biggest liability in the sheriff's department, the jail to be sued, the public works or, or IT or the treasurer's office. You gotta recognize those people are gonna be testifying, so they need to be, that's what I have for incentive. But anyways, we do appreciate your time, thank you very much. And we'd like to set up another appointment to have another work session so that, maybe not so early in the morning.
It was a special, I needed it at six.
Yeah. I would recommend next Monday at nine o'clock, because since most of us are gonna be out of town the rest of this week, where I am, and I know a few other, that work next Monday at nine o'clock, another work session. And I still have a lot of questions. And we've got a lot of information to digest here that Susan provided for us, but.
Well, I know we may mention it quite often that, that we give the latitude to the department heads, like officials to, if they had spare money.
Yeah.
To, to raise wages. Been there, said it on the radio a couple of times, so it's available. So, I hope the department heads and like officials take advantage of it.
Next Monday, you get them? Bill, you think next Monday work?
I have nothing.
I don't have anything.
Okay, it's scheduled next Monday at nine, nine AM?
But I knew from, you know, everybody knows, and Susan and I've had a few conversations way back when, about the same topic before it blew into what it is. And, and I knew that, without her telling me, but, you know, one of our biggest, or a lot of our money goes to salaries. So, just like you, you guys did at Public Works, you know, and that's why I came up with that. You know, I'm not saying that it's gonna cure everything by me not hiring two positions, but I'm trying to work to try to come up with stuff.
And the next Monday, I'm gonna talk about benefits. I keep hearing from our employees, well, I can't take those benefits to Walmart and buy groceries. So, we need to look at everything, the full package of these dollars. What are we doing that people like and what are we doing that people don't like?
Because, you know, what, what people wanted twenty years ago was health insurance and everything else. And now, it's that whole different genre of, of people working.
And we might be okay with that, we spend a lot of money on health insurance.
You can talk about that, but let me tell you, with an older workforce, one trip, major trip to hospital, and you're bankrupt.
I know, I know.
We think of that, but the eighteen, nineteen-year-olds don't think of that.
You don't think the older.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, next Monday at nine AM, bro.
Yes, that work for everyone, doesn't that work for you?
Excuse me. What additional data do you want me to pull?
What's that?
What additional data do you want me to pull?
Well, let's, let's look, let's look at carryovers for, for the previous years. See how much paid carryover. Because Jim and I started this process probably four years ago, wasn't it, Jim?
Yes.
So, let's, let's start looking, really, at what carryover was. What we can, because we, we operate on some carryovers, carryovers, but our biggest carryover always comes from the general fund.
Well, and the problem.
And employee business.
The problem with carryovers is, is you create your next year's budget based off of your carryover to keep taxes down. So, it's really hard to use those dollars, I think, for your raises.
But like I said, remember saying that.
It's not a constant either.
I actually looked at the two thousand and nineteen budget, there was fifty thousand dollars that was supposed to go in to corrections for wages.
Well, and it showed there was a three percent increase. I mean, over the last five years, it shows there was.
Nothing but wages.
Susan, and this might be totally out of left field. Is it possible for some employees, if I want insurance, I get insurance, but I make this much money. He wants, doesn't want insurance, he doesn't get the benefits and he gets kind of a package.
Obama changed that.
Yep.
I got you.
But if you do.
All for one.
All for one number.
If you decrease what you pay, because the county pays more than they're required to, than the state requires them. If you don't do that, the people that don't have benefits through us, if they have it through a spouse or someone else, they're gonna get more money in their pocket if you do that to wages. Mine's still gonna be the same because you're gonna take that back out to pay those benefits because it's gonna come out of my pocket.
I did the calculation on reducing benefits, what we pay to what the state's paying. And the employee will actually get dinged because of the tax consequences. So, where we're at, if we make any changes, it's going to affect their pay.
Well, you know, I want you, if you file your federal income taxes, place owner, to verify that you have insurance.
Yeah, you have to have insurance.
Fair motion, good yarn. You ready to?
So, move.
A second, on paper, aye.